This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, February 13th. We play board meeting. It's available by via go-to meeting also. We have an agenda in front of us. If you'd like to have a chance to look over the agenda. So, a motion to approve it?
Moved to approve.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Second. All voters say aye?
Aye.
Both motion carries. Approve the minutes for February.
I want to approve February 6th meeting and planes.
The motion is our second.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion?
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
County Attorney, Jones, discussion.
Morning. Morning. Don't have anything specific to talk about. Got an update on a situation or two. I'll probably email you about later this week. I've got some court hearings this morning. Shouldn't have to leave early, I don't think. It's been kind of a busy time, it seems, with criminal and court work. I don't know if it's any busy or it normally is or not. Maybe it just seems kind of like it at this particular time. But anyway, I don't have anything specific, but happy to... I will let you know as soon as, if, I hear any.
Very good.
And I'll bug 'em by phone, too. I just always like to get something sent out in writing, just so... Brandon, I can't remember his last name. He was the sales guy or the... He's our point of contact for what we did and I don't have his phone numbers on that string of emails, but I can get that for you. You might be able to help with some of that. Yeah, I think I saw it in there somewhere, but if I need it, I'll get it from him.
All right.
Anybody else?
All right. Looks good.
Okay. Thank you.
Approve the sheriff's report for January.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have January fees for you of $1,764.45.
I'm making a motion to approve sheriff's report.
The motion is our second.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion?
Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
One other item for you. I mentioned a few months back about getting a sheriff's comp board comparison for you guys. Essentially, it's just for your information on how it looks across the state on sheriffs and reported with their comp boards coming where they're office. Twenty-three's there and then twenty-four also shows not all the sheriff's report. So you have what I have from the association. So whatever you want to do, just review it, I guess, for your own information. Very good. Talk about things again here from now, I guess. So that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Anything on the new inmates coming?
No, other than the sheriff said I should know something this week. So I'll let you know.
Perfect.
You bet. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five. Department head discussion.
Just kind of deal with the bridge a little bit more. Some of the other departments, Mitchell Soil and Water Conservation District, Resource Conservation and Development Agencies, Watershed Management Authorities, Conservation Boards. What is going on is there's a grant availability to... And those entities would be the ones that would use it. It's for installation of creek, river, and watershed signs on county roads, city streets, and trails. And they're awarding up to $5,000 to $10,000 per county. That sounds good upfront, but I am nervous about replacing signs in our right of way and then we're winding around them. Or in the future, it becomes our responsibility to change them because they're damaged or faded or whatever. So I would just use caution as far as applying for this, thinking that this is a wonderful thing. So...
I think based on the type of sign, I don't think, because they're not regulatory signs in a way that reflectivity might not matter so much. I know we've put some... I think years ago, they had put some up. And I think the agreement will add is that we're not going to maintain them. We're not going to do anything with them. If they want them up, they're going to be marking rivers. That's great. But I don't think as far as the UTC is concerned right now that it's a specific requirement based on just that they're going to create purses.
That was the agreement before, is that you can put them up if you want. Road department, we're not going to take care of them. And I don't want something wrote into this grant that says all of a sudden we're responsible for it. So...
I'll work with conservation.
Okay.
I'm saying that. I just happened to notice after Mike talked about that a few weeks ago, that in my driving around, a lot of... If there are a sign on a gravel road especially, it's right, right on the bridge. And there was, I think there was only two, maybe three, but I'm telling you, every one of them was like this. And I have a suspicion that the combine head or something is a little bit wider today.
Are they object markers?
Yeah.
The vertical ones with the brake tuck and...
No, they were... It was up by the little cedar area. There was a couple of... It's not the...
What type of signs were bent over?
Well, it was regular, what, a square sign. It was on a steel pole that... What's that creek that runs up around there?
The name of the river?
Was it the name of the creek sign?
Yeah.
It was bent? Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Barrel, maybe?
Barrel.
Yeah. That one's labeled pretty good.
Yeah. And then, and there... Because I went a couple of miles around just to see what was it. And they were... Every one of them was kind of... Now, it could be down the ditch that it's going, but to me, it's like, maybe...
Yeah, sometimes they'll, you know, they're not probably put in as well as our regular street signs. They might not have the base that keeps it from tipping. Plus, you get all that water coming off bridges and stuff, and it softens the soil. You get some wind, they start leaning over, but just another maintenance thing for us.
Yeah, that's... I just don't want BNR to give us this money and then all of a sudden someday they say, "We noticed a bunch of our creek signs are bent over." Road department go out and straighten them up because that was part of the agreement. I don't want that.
Kind of reflects the street signage that's in the county. It was all, you know, all the street signs put up with grant money for E-911. And then, you know, later on, the money's not there to start replacing signs. At least that's what I'm understanding, is there's not always enough money to replace all the street signs that are out in the rural area because it was all put up with a grant. And then, I don't know if the funding can keep up with requirements to keep that stuff visible. So...
Hi, I'm Cynthia. I just wanted to let you guys know that there's going to be a claim that comes through through the thing in the zoning part of my departments. I'm going to be buying a plaque for someone who has served, who had served on my commission board for 38 years. And he actually just unfortunately passed away. So I'm going to be buying that plaque and sending it to his wife as a thank you for taking all of those years of his life and serving in commission county. So... Just wanted to let you guys know that.
Very good.
Thank you.
So that position is open now, too?
No, it's not. It's already... No, because this individual resigned. And then we didn't refill that position because there was actually an even number of individuals. So we, instead of there being an odd number, either five or seven, there was only six. So he resigned and we did not refill that position because we wanted there to be an odd number. I think the board needs to have that, since they appoint the members. They didn't either vote to have five members or to replace. Shouldn't that have been discussed when we filled the positions with... Or we took them off? Because I came in and I said that A had resigned. And then that should have been done back then.
What you're saying is it was a six-person... Excuse me. It was a six-person position and you feel the board should probably say, "We're going to five."
I tried checking into it, and if you appoint, then you guys kind of make those decisions.
Okay.
Whether it goes to five or you fill.
You want to put that on an agenda for us sometime and we'll just decide if we want to go to five or not, or stay at the six?
And then for next week, I'm going to send the agenda down on Thursday because we're closed on Monday for President's Day.
Okay.
Just one more thing.
Oh, go ahead, Todd.
Just going back to that Amanda's thing. Does Amanda need to take it to her board to approve? And then she brings it to our board and we approve?
I don't know if that's that. I don't know. I don't know.
I think we do... We approve members.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would think it would be us, myself.
Okay. They could maybe give an input or whatever.
There wasn't another person that wanted on there, right?
Correct.
That you had talked to?
For the commission?
Yeah.
That was for...
That's the other one. That was to fill the county position. And you guys filled that one fill straight. So that's why I'm saying if we were going to decide this, I guess it should have been done when we were appointing numbers to the board back then. I didn't think that there was any issue with this person with not filling this position because it was an even number. And now it's gone down to an odd number. So that way, there's an equal forum. We can reach a quorum easier.
We can... Excuse me. We just have an agenda item and then discuss how we want to do that. We'll take your recommendation for what you just said. So...
Anyway, I'm going to be buying that plaque.
Very good. That sounds good.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One thing I had. This is the SLU bill. Chairman signs these. This has Mitchell Soil and Water Conservation District. Their chair signs all these, then we sign all these, and it then ends up going to Amy. And Amy applies the appropriate tax stuff. So...
So what do we have to do, sign this?
The chair.
The chair has to.
Yeah. That's why we're taxing it.
Marks the chair.
All right. I didn't know. I've never seen it before.
Yeah, well, I did want the chair when I signed it last year. So... All of them? Yep. I think there's like 110 of them, something like that. But I got it right, it was last year. You have a pin, comfortable pin?
Blue pin. Okay.
That's one. Anybody else?
I haven't seen anybody on my line.
No. All right. County engineer?
Much discuss. I will be gone next Tuesday. Hope you're available for the meeting. The one thing that maybe we need to look at a little bit closer, and it's all Greek to me right now, was the whole change in, what was it, House File? 718. I think there's a little bit of scuffle in the county engineer's side of things with the rural basic transfer at minimum, the minimum 75%, and what that new bill does to the secondary road fund. I haven't read through it all. I'm trying to process it. The engineers had sent it out maybe late last week. And I just got... I was looking at some emails today, and there's some spreadsheets to follow. But what it could do and what some counties are thinking they might run into, those of us who are at the 75% minimum transfer will probably see this sooner rather than later, where I don't know if the county can keep up with that 75%. I'd have to read. I don't want to say anything that's too out of whack, but it could end up jeopardizing the fact that we might not be able to hit our 75% minimum required to get our road use tax money. And then on top of that, if the road use tax money, whatever we don't get in our 75% levy, or 75% of the levy, is what we lose in road use tax fund, which then gets dispersed to other counties who can meet it.
Right.
So while some counties, you know, they might be above that 75%, they're going to benefit more from those that can't meet that. And then the ones that can't meet it are going to get penalized. And then it also can affect our foreign market and whether we can use our foreign market money or not. So this whole thing is going... They're going to talk to legislature a little bit more about it because I don't think they have these intended consequences of what happens to everything else. I think, I think somebody went into this blindly, thinking that they were going to try to save the world. And they made a lot of things happen that aren't going to work for a lot of people. So... Yeah, go ahead, because you might have gotten more information.
So is that statewide supervisors meeting and the county supervisors spoke to this? And they're kind of a... They're not kind of. They are an urban county. So they don't have a huge amount of secondary roads. I mean, they have some, but they don't probably have structures in the secondary roads like what we do. So their rural basic levy rate was, if I remember, I was, you know, we're at 3.95 per thousand. They were just... I think that's what it was, or the low two. So they didn't... And basically, what that levy rate was, was the percentage that they were transferring in to secondary roads. I don't know if they were at the 75. I think they were above it. So what they were levying was the percent that they transferred into secondary roads. Well, what happened is this formula automatically knocked their levy rate down. So this year, they're going to be okay, and they can still transfer at least the minimum amount in the secondary roads, which is 75%. But they're thinking that this formula hits them down again next year. It's going to, it's going to put them at a levy rate that they can't transfer even 75% into secondary roads, which in turn means that they lose their REGF, the road use tax fund, the money, because you have to have a minimum of 75% to get road use tax. It's not a good deal.
You explained it better, yes.
So I'm not sure if it's going to play out for us or not, but it's one of those things that this is... They mess stuff up.
Well, you can't hit 75% of secondary roads and still cover all the other rural basic stuff. That's when you're...
Yeah.
Like last year, we had over 75%, right? Yeah.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three? So we would be okay then? Well, we're down to 75 now. So it doesn't... Because, yeah, it's... But we're not locked in. What's that? We're not locked into 75 yet. No. So we still could change it. Well, you still got to consider how much you're going to be bringing in. And this is a forecasted thing where some people aren't going to see it until fiscal '27. Fiscal '29 is when the whole thing is supposedly supposed to be enacted, which this is the debate. So some people are going to see issues earlier than that. Some people won't. But I think it's just something we've got to keep an eye on to make sure we don't lose the road use tax money. We should stay above the 75% of them. Well, you have to be at least 75. Right. And so... But if you're higher, you're safer. But I think it matters is what your main levy is also. So like he had said, they weren't doing the 3.95. They were doing less than that. And that's where we really heard it. We're doing 3.95 then.
They didn't need that much money in the secondary road system.
Right. So it's just something to keep an eye on. But I thought I'd bring it to your attention that there is some stuff going on in the background of this whole... And obviously, we know it affects more than secondary roads. It affects a lot more than just that. But it's making a mess of things. And...
We won't be cutting any funding. They're just going to disperse that money possibly from one county to a county.
For the road use tax? Yeah, we would be getting less. But the road use tax money coming in is all the same. But if we can't use it, they're going to disperse it among all the other counties that can, that are meeting the minimum requirement. I would say we should try to get above that 75%. Well, you know, to...
We can raise it, but then our percentage carryover is going to be less.
Right. See, you've got a whole balancing act. So as long as the balancing act works for now, it's great. But there might be a point where you don't have enough.
We have a couple of factors that we can move. Not saying this is what we do, but in the past couple of years, we use money from local option to cover general basic. We do not up that levy. We do have a few that could maybe go from rural basic to general basic. And then you might have to balance that way to allow the 75%.
Right.
So it's just...
It's a shell game of money, but you got to be careful that you at least can bring enough in to do that.
That's what they said down there. It's just a moving around process to make all this work. You have to do it that way. We're okay this year with the 75%. Things are going to work.
I think we'll be fine.
The way we are.
But I just wanted to give you a heads up that it could, you know, depending on what happens. And maybe things will change and this whole bill will get changed.
There was enough in that room that we're not happy with. We might have changed.
They'll say that. I think there was a push to try to give relief to people and what it ends up happening as it makes things a little worse also. That's all I've got for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve reporters' monthly report for January. We got a report here for $8,619.70.
I want to approve my reporters' report.
Motion is our second.
I'll second.
The second, any discussion?
Just got a question. What was the dollar mark? Is it? Marker.
Isn't it $8,619.70?
Yep.
And 70 cents.
And 70. Okay. I heard it wrong. It's my fault. Okay. Yep.
Any other discussion?
Roll call, Todd. Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Set public hearing for FY '24 budget amendment. It'll be like March 5th at 9 o'clock.
Right now, I'm wondering what the budget amendments warrants for the medical examiner department. We have like, after today's claim, there's a bill amendment for a hundred bucks. We're at like $800 and some dollars for the rest of fiscal year. So that's what we're running for. I also put in the additional revenue from the city school election. That wasn't in the budget. So those are the only items. You said March 5th?
March 5th at 9 o'clock.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment for March 5th at 9:00 a.m.
I'll second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion?
Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Because discussion and possible action on City of Riceville subdivision tax amendment request?
Right. All right. So I have a letter from the City of Riceville. You guys probably have received it and reviewed it. I'll just go ahead and read it. It's not very long. Dear Mitchell County Board of Supervisors, the City of Riceville has an urban renewal plan in accordance with Chapter 403 of Iowa Code, where its creation is a necessary tool to encourage new economic growth that could bring both jobs and housing opportunities to our city. The Riceville City Council has considered entering into a development agreement with respect to the use of future incremental property tax revenues produced within the urban renewal area to rebate back the cost of public infrastructure related to residential development known as OP's Backwoods Edition. The Carr-Omen LLC, the developer, has requested that the city approve the use of incremental property tax revenues for a period of 15 fiscal years. The Iowa Code authorizes cities to commit to this type of project for 15 years only if such use is approved by the governing bodies of the affected county and the school district. Please consider this letter of support from the Riceville City Council to approve this project within the urban renewal area for a period of up to 15 fiscal years in connection with the OP's Backwoods Edition. If approved by all, a resolution will be asked of your board to be passed by a later date when the urban renewal plan is amended to include this project. If the project is approved, they will be working with Dorsey &amp; Whitney, and they will be doing all the legal work for the project. The same request has been done previously. It looks like in July of 2021, a Rockbridge residential project was approved for the 15 years. And I just also want to clarify, this is like a rebate style type agreement. So you're not fronting any money to the developer. You're not issuing bonds. It's just basically like a rebate style agreement where you basically be beating those property taxes back that were paid back to the developer, just a portion of them. And that can be used towards public infrastructure. So with this project, it would be the water, sewer, roads, and stuff like that.
The Dorsey &amp; Whitney is also going to do a timeline for them and advise them as far as how proceed with all of this?
Yep. Yep. And so in the Code of Iowa, there's several requirements that they have to follow. And so, yes.
Okay.
Is it a hundred percent of the tax? I know you said a portion.
It's a portion of it. So the City of Riceville approved up to, not to exceed $250,000. So public infrastructure, I mean, it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So this helps the developer basically offset the cost so that they can keep, you know, their lots more reasonable to buyers.
So when they get to the 250 threshold, then it's done?
Right. Right. That's the most that they can have. And it could be lost depending on those incremental taxes.
Depends on what gets built, how many years it takes.
Yep.
Up to 15 for $250,000, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So they can do 10 years on their own, but they want to extend for five years?
That's correct.
So they need our permission?
Yep, that's correct.
And there'll be a resolution. This is just more of a...
This is kind of like the very beginning stage. Like, they're looking for your support because they're not going to go to the next step. If they don't have your guys' support, it needs to be put in our renewal area. And then there's like seven or eight or nine requirements from the state, from the Code of Iowa. There'll need to be like a consultation meeting involving, you know, the schools, you know, that will get ready to attend and stuff like that.
This is the correct way to do it. This is a good thing.
Do we have a motion to approve a letter of support for Riceville? I want to approve the City of Riceville subdivision tax amendment request. Okay, motion's our second.
I'll second that.
Second. Any other discussion?
Scott. Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Thank you.
Point member to the Veterans Affairs Commission. Looks like we have one person resigning and another person stepping forward. A name or who? Oh, John LaCosta is the one that wants to come on. And Ed Parcell is resigning. That's all I know.
I'll make a motion to appoint John LaCosta to replace Ed Parcell, who has resigned.
The motion is our second. I'll second. The second. Any other discussion?
Roll call, Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Sidney.
Items of note, meetings attended?
I went to the ISAC statewide supervisors meeting on the last Thursday. Lot of discussion. I'll just go through some of this briefly, some of these House bills that... There's a House Bill 608, and then there's some Senate bills also related to this, having to do with eminent domain. And they basically are, if 90% of the people sign up for... This has to do with pipelines. Then through a process, eminent domain can be started. But again, through a process, not just by heavy hand. They talked about juvenile detention and the unfunded mandates that are being applied to that, that counties have to pay for, that are required to do through the juvenile detentions. They want that changed. Inmate medical coverage by Medicaid, to have Medicaid pay for some of these medical expenses that we have to pay for for our inmates in our facilities. The I-Will program, which has to do with the Alcoa Recreational Trust Fund. They tried to get that enacted last year by the local option sales tax gimmick and taking that over. Everybody's in favor of I-Will to be done, but they don't want to be doing it through local option sales tax. Local option sales tax is for us to use. There's a bill on force reserve. They don't see any legislation that will affect public health this year, maybe next year. No major changes to property tax through this year. Big discussion of what Rich talked about in regards to that formula. Supervisor district plans. One of the thoughts are... Supervisor district plans, one of the thoughts ours to, there's three different plans, one is where supervisors are at large through the whole county, I think that's one. Plan two is you live in your district, but the whole county can vote on you. And number three is the way we have it where you live in your district and your district votes on you. For some reason they, the legislature feels they need to change that, which is kind of strange that they have all these thoughts that they know what's best for us, whereas the taxpayers know what's best for a city or for a county, that's, that's called local control. Anyway, they want to get rid of number two and force number two to, uh, with the population have to go into one or the other. They feel the need, they need to manage us in another way. There was a lot more going on than that, but it was a very good meeting and a lot of unhappy supervisors at, and I'm not saying just a dozen, there was.
A lot.
Couple hundred people there, a couple hundred supervisors and not too many people were very happy.
So will that affect this county?
No, no, there, I think it was a sixty thousand, uh, ways throughout.
Twenty-five, twenty-five thousand. Then they also want to switch in their, if they're the supervisor vacancy, they want to require a special election instead of allowing to appoint and then during the transition.
Then there's comp board thing that if, uh, one of the thoughts is eliminate comp boards, another is that, uh, how, how it would go is that any increases in pay and wages would be at the CPI or a maximum of three percent. That's it. Where, and ISAC is saying, well, you don't really need to overhaul the whole system again, what works for counties is working for counties. Maybe a better plan is to have the comp board, when they meet and do things, do just like what the sheriff did, show your work, and that's how they put it. You know, comp board meets, don't just throw out a number and wonder how you got that number, comp board has to show your work, how did you get that number? This is justify what you did. So that's ISAC's side of that. There's a lot more, but we'd be here all day like that meeting went, so. So I have.
I went to a summit pipeline meeting last Thursday. Not sure how much we've been, I thought so, I'm not going to talk about it.
I went to Summit Carbon Pipeline meeting too. And I had a, here we go, and I had a public health meeting too. Oh, Amanda went over all the wells and the water tests and, uh, she had to do the postcards again this year for water tests, some things went in last year more than ever has before, on the public health side. But the home health aides wages need to be raised, so I know they raised the starting wage and how they raise the wage for the current workforce of two dollars an hour just to keep up with nursing homes and stuff, so they have approved and, uh, well, they talked about the public health grants, expenses and revenue and everything's in order and coffee update and next meeting's April twelfth, so.
Well, this maybe, uh, meeting, they're still pushing to get physical done as soon as you can and when you get your physicals done, you get your name put in a hat and get a lot of gift cards every month, so the sooner you get it in, the better chance you have to get a gift card, so we can get our better rates on our insurance next year, we hope, so that's all I have.
Uh, I had a fair board meeting, um, went over our committee list, um, rodeo is, uh, will be on Friday night, will be starting at six thirty. Don't want to receive the contract for the, uh, Saturday demolition derby, so that's ago. There's, they're, uh, been talking about this for a few years, um, they have room for five more camper hookups on the south and it'd be one, then you'll cross the driveway and there'll be four more. Um, it's interesting that the last year or two that people want to camp down there in the off, off season, you know, not just during the fair, they bring their horse trailers and, um, they just, so they do rent them out, so they, they figure it was time to put those five in and then, uh, they're, they're full during the fair, so they'll be, there might not be five more, they might be already taken by people that, you know, we're not, we're not sure. So with that being done, um, they, they started receiving calls from fruit vendors all of a sudden for the fair and, and we've been putting it out there that we could use more because, so, um, yeah, there's, I don't know, six, eight people that have called it, um, set up, so now they have more electrical.
Yep.
So, but, uh, they have pretty much all drawn out where they're going to set these people and so, uh, there's already, um, some electrical there they just need to add to and then, uh, to be able to house those people, it's, the, the grounds right now, it looks like it's going to be pretty full, but that's a good thing, that's a good, it's a good thing, so, um, and let's see, oh, um, they bought a table for the ag breakfast, um, so there'll be eight of them going at six thirty on March twenty-first, which is a good thing to represent that, um, they're up there. And then, um, they found a different, uh, person to do wood carvings, um, this individual, her family was pretty interested in it, from Garner, yeah, so they hired him, so. That was it.
Winter management plan update?
And one from Schroeder Hog Farm LLC, thirty-three sixty-one, three hundred forty Street, Elma.
Public comments? During the meeting at nine oh eight?